Hello and welcome to Ward Talk, CTN's look at the political scene in Ann Arbor. I'm your host, Bonnie Gabowitz. We'll be discussing issues and solutions with the city council members from our five wards each month. Joining us today is Jen Cornell from Ward Five. Welcome Jen.
Thank you so much for having me.
It's a great July day and we have some great things to look forward to this summer in Ann Arbor.
Yes.
But let's start first talking about Ward Five, which I understand includes part of the downtown area.
Yeah.
And I know things are hopping there for the summer. So let's start talking about Ward Five.
Yes, thank you and thanks for having me. I'm really thrilled to be here. So what's really exciting about the downtown right now is we're in our Summer Streets program. So many of the streets downtown are closed to vehicle traffic from Thursday to Sunday night. And we have the social district.
So is that starting Thursday mornings?
Thursday afternoon. Right about 5 o'clock they drop the barriers off.
Basically dinner time.
Dinner time on, yeah. And so it's, the streets have been packed. On Thursday nights, there's usually a lot of activity going on just because of the excitement that the street is closed. And then on Fridays, there's usually live music down on Main Street. The vendors, all the restaurants, hospitality industry downtown brings their tables out to create extra seating and it's, it really is just a lively and fun atmosphere. And the social district is in effect. And so a lot of places you can get a drink to go and wander around and go shopping at the various stores that are neighboring the restaurants and everything else.
Where you're holding some wine, right?
Yeah, where you're holding some wine or, you know, whatever you might enjoy. But it's just, it's a really lively scene and it draws a lot of people downtown and it's, it's really energizing to be part of that.
Yeah. So that's probably a tradition that will be continuing as long as it's successful.
Yes, the Main Street, I'm involved with the Main Street Area Association on top of city council. And the Main Street Area Association members are enthusiastic about it. They really appreciate that opportunity to utilize sidewalk space either to set out, you know, for retailers, set out things they might want to sell, or for restaurants to expand their footprint with additional tables and chairs. And it's really a fun thing for us, I think, to be able to walk easily from one place to another and take in as much as we can for a Friday night or a Saturday afternoon or whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
And also, I know that the Klein lot is included in your ward.
Yes.
And there's always something going on with, what are we going to do with the Klein lot? It's been going on for years, I would say, right?
Yes.
So what is the present situation?
Yes, so recently, city council voted to approve the city pursuing a sale of the lot using a commercial real estate broker. And so it's, for us, it's a really great way to see what best ideas will come forward that could be built in that lot, that are built around our values for the community. So our sustainability goals, our housing goals, placemaking, you know, right now that is an empty lot right in the heart of downtown and in a part of downtown that people really love. It's part of, you know, anchors that historic district for that side of town.
So why is it that it's been taking so long to come up with an idea that is, seems to be a popular idea? What was the detriments to some of the plans from before?
Yeah, I think the bigger, the biggest sort of umbrella problem is that the city isn't really set up to accept proposals from developers who might want to come in and offer a vision for what that should be. The city, for its size, we lack an economic development organization that manages that, which is really typical in other cities. And so for us to be able to use an expert with a broker who does this day in, day out, and can come back to the city and say, "We've filled that gap for you. Let us advance a project forward for your consideration and to come to council and go through all the usual stuff in terms of public engagement or whatnot." This is a new approach for the city. It's something atypical, but I think in addressing that gap between what city staff can accomplish to really make something happen on that lot, this is the best path forward. So I'm excited to see what comes out of it.
Okay. So we'll definitely be watching that.
Yeah.
It also might take less time to actually have a vision and get started with the process of selling the property.
Yeah, I think the big difference is between the city issuing a proposal for that site and hiring a broker for that site is, we're not allowing the market and people who actually do this for a living and develop properties to come forward and say, "This is the way that you can get a public amenity in that site and, you know, maintain some parking, get a mixed-use development." Whatever it happens to be, we're not going out and asking for it. We're saying, "What is the highest and best use for this site based on people who do it all day long?"
So they know all the ins and outs.
Yeah.
So that sounds like it's much more practical.
It's very practical and I think the important thing is whatever comes forward, it still has to go through the normal development process and has to be something that the community will embrace and we think is a good value and a good deal.
Do you know how big the lot is?
It is, I do not know off the top of my head.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I don't want to guess.
But it's a good enough size to be able to fill something, have something important in it?
Yes, yeah, for sure.
Okay. And anything else going on in Ward Five that you can think of?
No, I mean, one of the things I think that's wonderful about Ward Five, and I'm obviously very biased, I think we're, Ward Five's the GOAT in Ann Arbor, is it's really cool to see people out enjoying our parks this time of year. You know, vets is always packed, the pool is always packed, there's always people, you know, walking through Eber White Woods, kids playing basketball and on the playground over at Virginia Park. It's just a really great time to remind people that there's a lot of, depending on your interests, you know, your physical abilities, there's a lot of open space in Ann Arbor for us to enjoy and a lot of the gems, I think, are in Ward Five.
Right. And some of the gems are really very quietly hidden. You have to kind of find them.
Yes, I think, I think Eber White Woods is a great, great example of that. It is such a beautiful park. There's so many miles of trails in there to walk and it's just kind of tucked away just right off of Liberty Street, which seems unreal to me that it is in such a prominent location, but such a...
Well, I'll have to check that out for sure.
Yes, yeah.
We started in June having a glass blower restriction, so I'm curious to know, we did cover it in the last time. I'd like to know how it's going. Are you getting many complaints? If there's a complaint, what is the process?
Yeah.
How does it work?
Yeah, so this is the first time that gas leaf blowers are banned. Right now it's seasonal until 2028. And so during the summer months, you're prohibited from using a gas leaf blower because there aren't really leaves for you to blow around. Overwhelmingly, the feedback has been positive. You know, everything from, "It's so nice to not be sitting on my back deck on a Saturday afternoon and listen to a leaf blower for 20 minutes," to, you know, just the health effects that it brings. There's, a constituent had reached out to me previously about bonfires in backyards and, you know, has a lot of difficulty with breathing and, you know, that was something from a lawn care perspective that was really irritating to them. So I think between noise and health, the feedback has been really positive. We've seen a lot of the landscaping companies are moving toward that direction and have been accepting it as well. And the police have been committed through community standards to enforce it. And so if you have, if you do have a complaint, you call the non-emergency line for the Ann Arbor Police Department and a community standards officer will respond.
Look into it.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, you know, it's something that seems like a small change, but one that was, we got, I personally got a lot of correspondence around, "Why can't we do something about it?" And given my background and interest in the environment, it seemed like a no-brainer and I'm really relieved that the community has embraced it as well.
So it sounds like it's beginning on a successful note.
Yes, touch wood.
And I know we have a big topic to discuss. I want to make sure we have plenty of time to talk about it. And that is that you, the city was looking into replacing the street lights with LED lights, but there was some controversy about the type of lights.
Yeah.
So let's talk about that. What, you know, why were they replacing it with these and what are the pros and cons?
Yeah, so the lights that are being used now are, throughout streetlights in Ann Arbor are high-pressure sodium. And so they're the ones that, they start off orange and then they get really bright and then they go out and they reset themselves. And they consume an incredible amount of electricity. And they're basically old technology. And so the city received a grant from SamCog to replace the streetlights all throughout the entire city. And obviously, the electricity provider for the city is DTE. And when the city went to DTE to secure a contract for the light bulbs, the original was, the original contract was proposed, was for a type of light that is less energy than the current high-pressure sodium ones, but still not the best energy-efficient light that we could get and is also extremely bright. And so for folks who aren't familiar, not only is this an energy concern, but the city does have a dark sky ordinance that requires us to be conscious of, like not leaving your porch light on all night, not allowing really bright lights in residential areas. And not only is that for our communities, and so you don't have to put up blackout curtains to sleep in your own bedroom, but there's a lot of science around how bright lights at night impact migratory patterns and just animal behavior that we don't want and is intrusive to those populations.
Plus, we want to see the stars.
Yes, I mean, at the very least, right? And most recently, all of us getting to see the aurora, like how cool would that be if, to have a truly dark sky? And so what came before council last night was basically better than what we have, but not as good as what we can get. And so I think, you know, we're really looking at DTE to give us something that aligns with our community values along our dark sky ordinances, but also increases our energy efficiency as well. So our city staff is incredible, absolutely some of the smartest, most dedicated people. I'm sure that they can get this done. It's whether or not DTE is going to be a good partner to us and basically give us a light bulb that they don't routinely stock in order for us to do that.
So we'll definitely be watching this particular topic.
Yeah.
As we talk each month.
Yeah.
Great. Well, we're going to take a break now, so we want to hear from you. So please email us questions to ctn@a2gov.org or tweet us at hashtag #CTNinArbor. We're taking a break now and we'll be coming back with more from Ward Talk.
Senior Moments provides valuable information for senior citizens on issues such as health, personal care, transportation, finance, and entertainment. With in-depth interviews and providing coverage of events and activities at senior centers in the Ann Arbor Ypsilanti area. Senior Moments, meeting the needs of senior citizens. Tune in on CTN Channel 16 and online at youtube.com/ctnannarbor.
What if the city of Ann Arbor created a reliable, 100% clean, affordable, locally-built, and community-owned energy utility? The city is looking to do just that by creating the Ann Arbor Sustainable Energy Utility, or SEU, a community-owned energy utility that provides electricity from local solar and battery storage systems installed on homes and businesses throughout the city. Learn more and share your thoughts on the proposed Sustainable Energy Utility by going
Two pioneers converge on him as soon as he got about to the goal line.
Look at Denzel just fighting people off as he takes it all the way upfield. And Denzel's trying to get into the...
He might hit a little something for his efforts there.
Oh, he did. He did.
Hi, I'm Brian Stegglitz, manager of water treatment services for the city of Ann Arbor. I'm excited to talk to you today about Ann Arbor Water, the city's new brand for its water utilities. As many of you know, the city provides three water utilities: drinking water, stormwater management, and resource recovery or wastewater to its customers. This new brand allows us to combine these three utilities under a single umbrella, which will allow us to communicate to our customers about how these three water services are connected through a single resource being the Huron River. If you're interested in learning more about our utilities, please come find us on the web at annarborwater.org.
I'm Dana Denha, host of Ann Arbor's news magazine program, FYI. Tune in every week for new episodes featuring a variety of topics on the city and county.
Hi, this is Bonnie Gabowitz again. I'm here for Ward Talk. We're speaking with Jen Cornell from Ward Five. Jen, we still have a few things to talk about. And one of them is that we have a new police chief who's been here for several months and he has a vision that sounds very interesting. One being police training for hate crimes and the other being having more of a police presence in the downtown area. So let's talk about what changes we're looking for.
Yeah, first of all, I think Chief Anderson is doing a really great job. He is, in addition to the hate crime training, the police had just completed a round of de-escalation training. And some of this is stuff that is fairly routine, but I think the fact that he's prioritizing this so early in his tenure sort of sets the tone for his expectations for the force. And that's really great because I do think that that's in line with what we expect from our police here in the community.
Right, and just to mention, I think one of the important aspects is that the public sees the police force acting in the same way, that they're following the policies in the same way. And there's no, you know, controversy about, "What do you do when you're in this situation?" Everyone's following the same book.
Yep, yeah, it definitely allows for a uniformity that I think is really important and a consistency that is really important in making sure that the community trusts the police to act in the way that we would expect. One of the things that Chief Anderson is really trying to organize within the force is more community-based policing. And so a certain sergeant and certain officers are assigned to certain communities, neighborhoods, for, you know, a set period of time so that neighbors understand who they are, who they can ask for help if need be, and, you know, really officers who become familiar with a particular neighborhood and a particular beat.
And in this way, the public can be more comfortable talking with them. It's not just saying, talking about problems, but just creating a connection and a comfortableness, so to speak.
Yeah, and I think, you know, one of the things, and part of that is to say that that's what the police are going to be doing, but the other part is sort of, how do you live that ethos within the activity beyond just the policing? And Chief Anderson is going to be going out ward by ward and having community meetings. He's already started them and will continue to do so so that it's not just the beat cops, it's not just, you know, the everyday police patrol, but you're seeing the chief of police out who's really showing an interest in understanding what each individual neighborhood around the city is. And I think for a city in Ann Arbor who, that really values, you know, compassionate policing, you know, non-police response as part of, you know, what we would like to see happen within the police force, he's doing that in a way that is going to be thoughtful and careful and very sensitive to what we expect. He's getting to know our community right from the start and that's great. I think that's really positive for us all.
Great. And we'll be following this each month to see how it's going.
Yeah.
Great. Also, the DDA has been working on, for a while, has been working on making sure that there's more safety by having street and sidewalk repairs.
Yeah.
And I know at the last night's meeting, there were some photos shown of how they're, let's say there are loose bricks.
Yes.
That could be a hazard.
Yes.
So are they looking at just the downtown area that they're responsible for?
Yeah, right now, but I think that there are definitely lessons learned from that State Street Improvement Project and it's been, they're using that experience, the DDA staff is using that experience to figure out what's working there in order to improve other crosswalks and whatnot. And so one of the great things about the State Street Improvement is that curbless design. But in order to make that work, there were certain accessibility features that were built into the crosswalks themselves. And we're going to see more of those throughout. Those are some of the improvements that throughout the downtown area, the DDA is planning on. You mentioned the loose bricks, replacing those with concrete because they're a much longer-term safety issue is, you know, it's easier to maintain that concrete. And then just from a beautification standpoint, the DDA is looking at some of the areas where we have trees that are planted within the, within that public right-of-way that have bark or, you know, mulch around them, which can get a little messy and maybe is not the most beautiful thing that we could have on our streetscape. And replacing it with decorative grating that allows still for, you know, water to pass through, but isn't a problem.
But it also won't require the maintenance.
Correct, yeah, correct. And so the other big thing that the DDA is doing that the public won't probably, will very much appreciate but not realize is just the resurfacing to make sure that our parking decks remain in good repair, painting so that they just look nice, and some water drainage issues. U of M-owned parking structure during a recent rainstorm flooded.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah, and so I think that for, you know, this project for the DDA had been planned before that, but boy, does that not make you feel compelled to expedite it?
Well, I guess, you know, no committee plans on major unusual storms. And this is something that might, we might have to look at as a possibility from now on.
Yeah, sadly, I think you're right.
Okay. And let's see, what else? Okay, I noticed that there were, a little bit of area was just, is being annexed. And I want to make sure the public understands what annexing is and why the city chooses to annex a small territory and place it under the city's governing. So could you tell us, what is it and why is it done?
Yeah.
For what purpose?
Yeah, so you did a really good example, I mean, that's a really good explanation, is that we have certain areas in the city that when it was formed became islands. And so for me, when, I think for everyone on council, basic city services, being able to deliver on those with high quality and uniformly throughout the city, that's really important. And that's really what the annexation is about. And so...
So you have to have a specific reason why you're going, it's not just because, "Oh, this is nice property, let's own it."
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, often it has to do with roads, sidewalks, water drainage, pavement repair. So all of the things that, you know, make transportation possible, make pedestrian and bike, bike safety, excuse me, insured by having that consistency with roadways or even just access to sewer and water. I mean, annexation is such a, it's so boring to talk about, but it is what, but that is basically the services that people really rely on for government, you know, trash and recycling and things like that. And so to be able to have that consistently throughout the city is a value.
So who owned, who was in charge of that property before it's been annexed?
The township.
Okay, so does the township have to agree to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's, I mean, for us, it's, it often comes at the request of a homeowner, a property owner. You know, and in my experience, what I've seen is they want access to water, they want access to city sewer, and they want, you know, sidewalks. So again, it's really basic services that often are the catalyst for beginning that process.
And it doesn't happen very often.
Very, very infrequently. And you said it was tiny, I mean, it was a very small, I want to say, two-acre parcel. So in a city as big as Ann Arbor, being able to just not have a two-acre gap between a sidewalk is, it's a minor inconvenience, but over time, it certainly adds up. And I think if you're a property owner and you're in that island, feeling like you're surrounded by services that might be better or more desirable, having access to that, we're all neighbors, let's go for it.
Just a quick mention of the State Street Eisenhower Business Improvement Plan. Just a quick update on that.
Yeah, so basically, the state allows for business zones to tax themselves to fund improvements within their area. And so right now, the State Street corridor and along, up to like Fourth Street, Fourth Avenue, that is a biz district downtown. Those businesses tax themselves and do everything from the planter boxes to snow removal to alley cleaning. The one that we voted on to create last night in that state and Eisenhower area, it's very similar. The businesses in that area are going to be taxing themselves and doing streetscape improvements through landscaping. They want to put up better welcome signage coming in and they want to make that area much more attractive to folks.
Right, and also to be safe, because that's a very busy area.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not done in isolation, right? And so in a way, it's very much done in concert and partnership with the city and it's extending what the city can do on its own by these business owners paying for private contractors to come in and advance the goals that we all share, right? Like making sure the lawn is mowed and that instead of a field of weeds, we can put in native, native wildflowers. I mean, it's, I'm excited to see that. That's an entryway to our city and right now, it doesn't have the best feel. It feels very concrete and sterile. So I'm excited to see what improvements they bring.
Okay, and the minute we have left, I would love your personal take on your experience being on, on the council and how it's going for you.
Yeah, I think I'm in my second year, almost my second year now, end of it. And I am continually impressed with city staff. They work really, really hard. I'm humbled by my colleagues on council. They care a lot. And even when we disagree, which is not infrequent, we do so respectfully.
But healthy.
Healthy, collegially and in a way that I think is definitely what we should put out to the public is for, we've all got sort of the same ideas of what we're going for, like carbon neutrality, right? How we go about it, there may be disagreements, but when we do it, we get over it when we don't agree and we work really hard to make it, to expedite it when we do. So I'm really proud to be part of that group.
Well, I want to thank you for being on the council and I wish you all the best.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks to constituents who reach out. I mean, that, I think, I get a lot of communication, it's very meaningful, it's really helpful and I love hearing what, what my neighbors want. And so I want to thank those, you know, my neighbors too.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So please remember to join us for a new episode every month. We want to hear from you, so please email us at ctn@a2gov.org. Attention, Ward Talk. You can also follow CTN and ask questions on Twitter at twitter.com/CTNinArbor. We'll make sure to include your questions. To watch this and all of CTN's program, head online to youtube.com/narbor. For Ward Talk, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz. Until next month.